As far as running a few minutes late, the first item on the agenda is a discussion about the planting of the trees and any possible action that we might want to take. Mr. Johnson?
Good evening. Joe put together, or Joe has a little PowerPoint presentation I think you have the print out of. Just want to cover a couple of things and then have a discussion with you with what our opportunities are. Joe, do I control this, or can you change the next slide? There we go. I do want to kind of cover how we got here, and sometimes it's good to look back. Just so you know, the will oaks along Section Street were planted sometime circa 2002, 2005, and I understand they weren't all planted at the same time. They are a wonderful, large, over-story tree, but they grow up to 60 feet in height and somewhere around 35 feet in diameter at the canopy. They are relatively fast-growing with a sizable root mass. One of the things, looking at some street view photos and having a discussion with our horticulturist, you know, he pointed out something to me because I was a little bit surprised at the rapid growth as well. And he reminded us that, listen, all these trees sit in flower beds that we constantly add plant food to, that we add fertilizer to, that we put that super-growth soil around, and we water every day. So his equivalence was they're kind of juicing. They're on the steroids. They have the perfect benefit to grow very rapidly. No doubt that the biggest challenge here is they were outgrowing their environment. We were having sidewalk uplift. We were constantly having to replace pavers that were coming trip hazards, concrete gutter lines that were getting lifted and as such. And so we spent about two and a half years with the Tree Committee off and on talking about a suitable replacement tree. At the meeting before Arbor Day this past year, or this year, they finally made a recommendation and came on a consensus in conjunction with our horticulturist to choose the Chinese pistachio, which is an ornamental tree, which we discussed back with you at a council meeting and work session back in May, I believe. We developed a change-out plan, and probably one of the things that we didn't cover, and this is something that was probably an important bit of information, is when we were talking about how we go about replacing trees on the internal operations side, the biggest concern was that due to the size of many of the will oaks, we wanted to avoid mechanical replacing, meaning literally digging out the stump. So Paul, our horticulturist, felt very strongly that by using technology in the form of our stump grinder, that we should be able to grind the stump down and actually plunge it until we made a receiving pocket large enough to receive the new tree. And that worked in many cases, especially in the tight confines of downtown, especially the section of block that's north of Fairhope where the actual trees sit in the sidewalk footprint as opposed to a bump out from the curb line. So we made a decision on two things: size and how we have to manually replace them, and also, and this is 100% on me, when I looked at the cost variations between the sizes of tree, it was very hard for me to recommend to you to buy a tree for three times the amount of the smaller size, knowing that the smaller size would be the larger size in a period of time. And that was a mistake. Again, as I said, we cleared the old stumps and cleared the old stumps and created planting pockets by stump grinding and plunging the grinder in to create the pocket. And again, the goal of the project was to try to avoid mechanical removal to limit infrastructure damage. Just to kind of trip down memory lane, because I also realized, which was short-sighted to me, is that I think we all have institutionalized nostalgia. We remember something as it's always been that way when we see it currently. And here's a picture of the Welcome Center and the museum from Google Maps. This is Street View, 2007 to 2019. Again, you can see a dramatic change in the size of the trees. Now granted, one is Christmas time and one of them is springtime, and the canopy is not there, but you can do that trip on Google Maps yourself. Again, the corner of Delamar and Section Street, in 2008, the tree on the corner there is just a little bit above the first level of the gallery, and in 18, it's a good 15 feet above the roof, and today, if you go by there, it's about 20 feet above the roofline. Probably the most dramatic is the two in front of Greer's and the Landscape Island. As you can see, they're about an inch caliper and about eight foot tall in 2008. You see 10 years later, and even today, they've grown a considerable more. So I think the point of this is that, yes, sometimes trees do start out small, but they do get bigger. That is part of the goal there. But probably one of the things I want to share with you was one tree that we could not grind the stump, we had mechanically removed, and it was located at the intersection, which would be the southeast corner of Magnolia and Section. And it was a very difficult extraction, and water line as well as electrical lines were damaged in that process, no matter how gentle we tried to work that stump out. And the next day, unfortunately, our utilities had to spend a good bit of time rerouting that water and reestablishing that electric. So that was the challenges, and that's what led us to make internally decisions from an operational and procedural standpoint that I did not do a good job in explaining to y'all and the reasons why. So I think there's a definite opportunity to move forward. There are some limitations, and I've at least laid out options and even kind of gave you my commentary, the ones that I didn't think were recommendable. Option one is to go ahead and complete the change-out with the current trees in stock. It'd be no additional cost to the city. I can't recommend that because I don't think the big issue is it's not the need to change out the trees, it's not the variety selected. I think the biggest concern is, is that many of the trees are relatively puny. They're small, and the difference is from what it replaced is dramatic, and folks are worried about that, and that's a reasonable concern. Option number two is to replace the limited number of problematic trees, and I would define the four trees that are really problematic are the one at the corner of Johnson and Section next to PNC Bank, the two at each corner of the intersection of Delamar and Section, and there is a large tree offset of the intersection at Quality and Section, and leave everything remaining south of Johnson in place for now, to be addressed at some future date. And why that's an option is, for example, the ones in front of Greer's are in a nice big median landscape bed, and it's not really interfering with the sidewalk, and all the remainder of trees were actually installed into a purpose-built bump out that comes, projects out into the actual parallel sparking space, and those are not as critical. They're not affecting the sidewalk and have more room to grow. To order four good-sized trees to replace those, we're looking at expense not to exceed I wasn't really a fan of that because it seems to be that we're leaving a project half-done, and that's a tough one to do. Option three is to complete the change-out with larger trees, and I have a picture of it in the following slide, while leaving all currently planted trees in place. I don't think that's going to be an attractive option to you as our city leaders. And then those trees that were ordered that are smaller, to plant them in other appropriate locations, even if we went down with your permission and lined the new property at 32 and 13 so that in the future when we do something that already has trees growing nice and straight along the borders, but doesn't interfere with the farming operations there. Then option four, which is, Marcus and I were talking about earlier, is a little problematic because we run into bid law requirement, is just redo the change-out of all smaller trees currently planted and all remaining trees with larger trees pictured on the following slide, and reuse, remove, and unused trees in other locations. The challenge there, that additional cost would be not to exceed $44,000,480. Here's the issue: we've already entered to this nursery that has the availability of these container-grown trees, $22,000, so that would be cumulative, and as soon as we exceed $50,000, we get into a bid situation. So we would have to take a long enough pause to get out for bid, and we spent enough time to know who had container trees of this variety and who didn't, so we would probably end up with the same company, but we would have to follow the bid law to do that. So really, the option of moving on, option four tonight, is not really an option because we have to meet the bid law. Here, we asked the nursery again to go out into the field and take a picture of the tree that we're quoting, and this is the actual tree, picture taken on Friday, the 21st. He has his mask on, so he's social distancing there. Two and a half inch caliper, about 12 to 13 feet in height, again, Chinese pistachio, red push variety, and he does have enough of that size available to transport as soon as ordered. And just as, sometimes you appreciate calmness in a time of non-calmness, this was just a comment that was made on social media that was not solicited by anybody, and it, and I do want to read it to you. "I don't want to second-guess the decisions made by the volunteer tree board. There is no perfect tree. Selection for this site had many criteria put upon it. No tree fit every requirement. They will grow. I actually prefer planting smaller trees as they establish faster than larger counterparts and will significantly outgrow a much larger tree planted in the same time in the same conditions. Urban trees suffer, but the pistachio trees should do fine." And that was an unsolicited commentary from Chris Francis, who is our local ISA Board Certified Master Arborist. So I am highly confident that the species that we picked is a great tree. I am not confident that the smaller size that we picked is large enough, okay? But, you know, I do want you to know that the photos that we included when we covered this with you were deceiving in this sense. They're sitting in a container on the ground, and the guy is standing beside it at the same level as the container, and our mind sees what our mind sees, and then we've got to remember when it's in the ground, it's 30 inches shorter than as shown in the picture. So I'm just looking for guidance here. I will tell you my biggest concern, Paul and I talked about this this morning, if you notice those trees, especially the small ones, have already put on shoots. Many of them have new growth on them, about three inches. That means they're rooting. And the biggest concern is, if we go too long, we may not be able to reuse the ones we cool up because we may destroy the root ball in the process. But, you know, that's just a practical matter, but we'll do our best.
Mr. Johnson, I have several questions. And counsel, I want to make a comment that if we have to go out to bid, option four may not be an option, but it is an option to say, go back out to bid with those. So that option four is on the table tonight. So to say it's not an option, it is an option.
Well, it's not an option for tonight's action, so...
Well, it's an option to give guidance to go out and solicit bids, I guess. My first question is, and yeah, your eyes can fool you, but my ears did not fool me in the meeting, and the question was raised by Councilman Boone as to what the height would be, and there was, you know, and I'm paraphrasing here, but the answer was 12 to 16 feet. And I don't think he was talking about length from the bottom of the root ball to the top of the tree. I think that he was more than likely asking how tall the tree would be. So my first question for you, that's neither here nor there. My first question would be, on this slide where it says 12 to 13 feet height, is that going to be above ground level, or are we going to go back to this, well, that's to the bottom of the root ball to the top of the tree? I'm going to be very specific with some questions so citizens don't say you didn't ask them the right questions, so get ready.
And again, what I will ask is, before we make an order, to have a measurement so that we know what that range is. I'm, you know, this is always dangerous to assume, but in this picture, and now note that the basket that the root is sitting in comes up above his knee there, but assuming that guy is close to six feet tall, if he was standing up on that board that's on each side of the trunk, that would tell me that tree's about 12 feet tall, okay? But every tree is not identical, but we can be very specific in, especially go out to bid, that minimum of 12, you know, up to 14, and either it is or it isn't.
Well, going back to the comment about it being 12 to 16 feet, what did we order if we were expecting 12 to 16 feet? What did we order? And then when you answer that question, I also want to say, when the trees came in and we looked at the trees, and if we were told 12 to 16 feet, why did we put them in the ground if they were seven feet above ground?
And I'm the one that, when Councilman Boone asked that question, and I glanced at the picture, and I threw a number out without it being verified, okay? And I will tell you, maybe it was a marketing ploy upon the nursery, but if you recall from the original quote, "They referred to the smaller trees as huge and the larger ones as giants." It should have been small and slightly larger than small if I was to apply that...
Gave you that, for sure.
So again, you know, and I do believe that in the lot of trees that we received, we received each of those trees that were in those pictures they sent us as well. I don't, I mean, again, it's one of those things is that as far as the quality of the trees, the health of the trees and everything else, I can't complain there. They were as advertised, and I don't know if we ever, ever specifically had a guaranteed height range of what the huge was versus the giant.
I've got one last question, and I'm going to let the rest of the council ask questions. Is there a possibility to leave some of the more mature trees up downtown that haven't been removed yet and replace them in a year or two as some of these smaller trees grow? Or are we risking damage to utilities that, you know, the roots could damage the utilities or the roads or the sidewalks?
Yes, there is a possibility that we could just put a halt to everything right now, and every tree that's there today would remain there going into the future. A couple of challenges, and this is one of those considerations we had. As you may or may not know, that archery ordinance provides certain protections when a tree reaches heritage status. Heritage status is defined at 20-inch diameter at breast height measurement. Right now, the largest of those trees is sitting at 17 inches, meaning that it could very well be in a year or two that it's going to reach a heritage status. And then if we have to do something to that tree, then we're going to have to ask this council to either give us a waiver from or not follow our own ordinance, and that's not good public policy. And that was a consideration. These trees are growing, they're a rapid-growing tree, they're a big tree. So nothing has to be done today, nothing has to be done tomorrow, and we're going to bring you another option back because Patrick, who is on our tree committee, has been doing some research. We do have a local nursery over in South Mobile County that has these trees this size in the ground, but they're only available to be safely transported, to be dug and to be moved, in the dormant months, which starts in January. But I don't know if that would be acceptable from a timeline with this body. And it would be a significantly less cost, too. You know, you're cutting out transportation and you're not buying containerized trees at that point in time, which are significantly more expensive.
Counsel?
Yeah, so the problem with that one, I guess, also is if we choose an option that replaces the smaller trees that are currently there, that were put in last week, and wait until January, we've allowed them to root, and then the possibility of reusing those would be lost...
Diminishes.
Or greatly reduced. What about the option of replacing some of these, sort of a combination of two and four, which is we replace some of the concerning or problematic trees, the four that you've mentioned, but also reordering the amount to be able to replace the ones that were put in last week with a much larger version? That would keep us potentially under the bid amount. This would be leaving the majority of trees from Fairhope down to Morphe alone, replacing the problematic four that you've talked about, and also replacing the smaller trees from Fairhope to Oak with a larger batch of the same kind of Chinese pistachio.
Are you talking like maybe alternating every other tree, get it replaced with a larger one?
Well, it depends. So we're replacing, we've replaced 24 trees right now, is that right?
Somewhere in that neighborhood, a little over half, so maybe...
So we've done 24 of the smaller variety. If we go out and say, all right, we want 24 of this one, all right, so we can redo the change-out from the ones from Fairhope to Oak, and then only replace four additional trees that were problematic on the other end, so that we're leaving most of what from Fairhope to Morphe intact until, you know, because like you were discussing, the ones in front of Greer's have a nice bed to grow out into, and some of the others were placed in an area where they can jut out so that they are not causing the same infrastructure or utility issues that some of the others on the other end were creating.
And there's no doubt that, and I don't know how you feel about this, but for example, the run that goes on, especially the east side of Section from Magnolia north, one, a lot of the trees furthest to the north were already small trees to start with because that area had been redeveloped. The trees along down from the bank down to where Marcus's office is already has a lot of background trees there, so they don't stand out very much as being small. And those trees were relatively small because they were suffering from shade conditions from the large live oaks to the east. There is no doubt that the principal stretch, i.e. Magnolia to Fairhope, that we could keep under bid law, replace every tree there with a larger variety, and probably also take care of the remaining four trees that are of principal concern, and stay under the bid law cap and get that done very quickly, yes.
And can I piggyback on your comments, Jay? And then, I don't know what, do you know anything about the size of the trees that are grown locally in South Mobile County? I mean, do they have, you know, a very large variety and a lower cost, and then we might could replace the problem trees with even larger trees, larger than what we can get?
I can find that out. I mean, again, we have...
You'd have to wait until January, though.
Do you have some info?
I spoke to, is this one? I spoke to Patrick, who was on the tree committee.
Yeah, he's here.
And he did call. They had the pistachio that is in the ground, and they're out going to have it planted until January. So when that is larger, that, they had already pulled that out, that's just not a possibility.
Well, I was thinking, what I really was, and I probably should have said more, too, so good point. The, what I was thinking was, if we could get through the holiday season and get into, it'll be dormant, will they be dormant through, say, February?
Yeah. The trees are 12 to 15 feet tall. And he asked me at the time, he told me they'd be 2.5 each. But I asked him, hey, if we're buying 40 or 50, you're going to cut us? Because I'm used to working for four state agencies, so I always try to get around. Because I think he's a problem, yeah, for two, right?
Well, I was only, well, and we might consider that, but I was only thinking of the problem trees.
Four that you ordered.
The four problem trees, getting the larger trees out of Mobile County and replacing them, say...
In January.
Well, or even maybe the end of February, because they're going to be dormant probably through most of February, too. And how to get us through most of the holiday season with the lights and all.
...about middle of March.
Yeah, and that's, I guess, another question is, let me, and let me confess something here, is, you know, I am your tree committee liaison, but I express and have no expertise whatsoever in the area of trees, and so, you know, I mean, I don't offer a whole lot in that regard, but what I do know is that we've got people that really know what they're talking about, and Patrick's one of them. And so Patrick, as far as planting these are concerned, you know, is this, you know, we've changed out approximately 24. Is it smart to change those out again right now, or is it smarter, change them out right now and risk being able to save these 24 and repurpose them, or is it smarter to give it some time? And, I mean...
Well, right now, as Richard mentioned, they're starting to put on new growth. And he's correct, the roots have taken place, and you're basically root-prenanted if you were to take it out now. And to be honest with you, August is about the worst time to be putting trees in front. If you were bare-rooting them, you'd kill them. That's why this guy was insisting, I can't dig them up now, I'll kill them.
What about the ones that, what about the ones that we...
If you waited until February or so, yeah, you could safely take those out. That wouldn't be a problem.
Take them out of the ground and...
Take them out of the ground. But one issue that I didn't realize until Richard brought it up now is the way they prepared those holes. You have to have an adequate root zone, and we're already dealing with the optimal root zone for a tree to start with. So to put in a bigger one like that, I have a little bit of concerns about the root zone being big enough.
And that's one thing we've already acknowledged, that if we do go the bigger one, we're going to have to go and make the hole bigger, of course, and that's going to be a little bit more invasive, but we will, we're very good at putting back together what gets broken, so it's what we do.
So what you're saying, Richard, is there's a very simple solution to that, is what it sounds like?
Well, I think there's an elegant solution that hopefully makes folks feel a little bit better, and that's what we're here to do. We, you know, we want there to be pride, and we want folks to enjoy our downtown, and if, by addressing the block that is of greatest concern, and then having a strategic plan at a better timing in January, February, March, to hit those other ones, I think that's a very workable solution. Let's, you know, I think that we can manage to get container-sized trees here that solves the main block that is of concern between Magnolia and Fairhope and not get in violation with the bid law, and then for a very good value, be able to get nursery, ground-grown nursery trees spaded out and transported here to replace those others that are problematic. And we'll, you know, and we'll change out the lights at that time and everything else. That's what we do, and we'll be glad to do it, so.
Well, and Richard, thank you for, I can only imagine what your last week has been like with this going on, and it's been, you know, I mean, this is, these are the big deals that we have in Fairhope, and this is what's so great about where we live, is that these are the major problems that we're dealing with. And they're important to everybody, I can assure you, but I know you faced a lot of these questions and a lot of this turmoil on you, and so we appreciate you.
Well, we want to do right by you, do right by our citizens, and so that's, you know, we, hey, it's just how we roll, so it's all good.
Richard, I'm just looking at the, I don't want to back up too much, but I'm looking at the pictures on the slides that were presented last time, and taking out the root ball and just going as if these trees were from the ground up. The ones shown in the picture, I'm going to estimate that the huge variety in the picture's approximately nine to 10 feet, and the giant varieties approximately maybe 12 to 14 feet. And then a lot of the ones that I actually saw planted were more like seven feet. So did we wind up ordering huge, or did we order a combination? And then what do we think was, I mean, did we get delivered exactly what we ordered? The prices or the sizes just vary that much from what was shown in the picture? I mean, what is your...
Well, if you remember, our initial order was 55. Forty-eight of them were described as huge, which was in that 10-foot range.
And then seven were...
Seven were the giants, which were that 12 to 14-foot range.
That's creative advertising, isn't it?
I think that those descriptors are not real, in our minds are real accurate for what that is. And I will tell you, there was some variation in height of the small trees. There is, and that variation is probably as much as 24 to 36 inches.
Okay, that's substantial.
And, you know, some of them sat a little lower than others just based upon the grade that we're working in, too, so...
Well, some of them that I saw, you know, the one right in front of East Bay, it looks larger at that corner, it looks a lot larger than some of the others. Is that a, is that a giant?
That is, yes. We were designating the five corners, we're getting the giants.
Okay. And so what we would expect to get in a reorder, because even that one, the giant that's at the corner, doesn't seem, doesn't, and I hadn't stood next to it, but do we think that one's 12 to 14 feet?
Yeah, and that's a nice, it has a much fuller top in it, too.
It did that, I can tell. I just didn't stop to see exactly how tall it might be, but, you know, looking at some of these older pictures, it's clear that we've been through this before a little bit, and I know it's, I don't know if we've always changed them out as quickly.
And I wasn't here for the Bradford pears on Fairhope, but those were pretty much changed out in total. But Section Street's interesting is when you kind of, as we put together history, it was one here, one there, one here, and so it was incremental, and whereas we kind of did a shock and awe to y'all guys, and one day it was one way and the next day it was very different. And I think that, a learning lessons, if I ever come back to you again, and maybe, you know, it would be every other tree until those matured enough where you would address the other and such, but we are, I am capable of learning.
We felt the shock and the awe.
Yes. And I think that we were, I mean, I can say, I was already anticipating a little bit of a shock to the system, and I think we were just trying to minimize the extent of the shock with the size of the trees. You know, a few extra feet would definitely go a long way to...
Yes, sir.
Some surface area for some lights would be greatly appreciated.
About double. Robert?
Oh, yeah, I've got a few questions. First of all, I've gotten several compliments on the little trees. Some people like them that you can actually see downtown, but that's neither here nor there. I think that's just a small minority. So the trees that we're taking out are roughly about 10, 12, 13... So, the trees that we're taking out are roughly about 10, 12, 13 years old?
In general, yes.
In general, somewhere near.
We think the general planting of the, of the willow oaks occurred roughly, the majority of them, between 2002 and 2005. There's a gentleman named Mr. McDonnell I met that said that he, he helped work with Ms. Fiddler to plant the ones that are kind of south of Johnson, and his memory was that was between Ivan and Katrina, which would have put it in that 2004, 2005 period. But, and, you know, for example, the ones that were in front of the Hampton Inn were not planted until that building was finished, and that was, what, 12 years ago, roughly?
Got you. What's the lifespan of this Chinese pistache, roughly?
I, I do not know that right off the top of my head. The, the, the best thing about it is, is its mature height's about 35 feet, which is really the right scale for downtown, meaning that's a little bit better than a two-story building, as opposed to, more to a scale of a four-story building. Patrick, I mean...
Yeah, I know of one, it's Bryce Hospital. Not that I did any kind of there. But this Bryce planted it 140 years ago. Tuscaloosa, we, I planted some in downtown Tuscaloosa in 1984. It would take a year. We were looking then at a 50-year lifespan. So, that was one of the things the tree committee looked at, is we don't need to be changing out stuff every 25, 30 years. We need to look at something that's, that's going to outlive us. And I have the confidence that the pistache will all be 100 before we have to start looking at it.
And how tall are those in Tuscaloosa now?
They're about, about 20 feet tall, you know, average, maybe, some of them might be 25. It depends on, some of them got planted in flower beds and got fertilizers, some of them got head shaved, but on the average, they're a little over 20 feet. Baymanet, City Baymanet has planted some. They are not doing quite as well, but the problem is, they, they're not taking care of them the way Fairhope does. But they're still doing well. It's a tough species. But I honestly think, once they get about 20, 25 feet, they're going to be there for 30 to 40 years before we have to start working.
And I guess, so that's good to know. I guess my question is, you know, I understand the reason for not mechanically removed, you know, to not further damage utilities, but what about, any concern about the root system rotting and then not supporting this tree over time? I mean, like, tree settling?
Not worried about the tree settling. We, we kind of acknowledge that we will probably be resetting some pavers over time as, as the, that root mass that has projected out under the pavers rots away. And that's, we, we reset pavers pretty regularly anyway. They, they tend to get moved around based upon rain, wear and tear, and things of that nature.
Okay. I didn't know how much of the main root was left when you said y'all plunged the grinder down. Was there not much left of the...
Well, we, we're very confident, we actually ground down the dirt, but the problem is, is we left everything outside the circumference of the hole still there. So, that's going to rot beside the tree. Yes, sir.
Minimal, okay. The last question, where, have you thought of ideas of where to place these 48 large Chinese pistaches?
No, we, we kind of talked about it this morning a little bit, me and Paul did, and, and, you know, there's, you know, one of the first persons we'd reach out to is Pat White and ask what at Rec Facilities, if he had any locations that needed beautification. One of the things I thought about was, was, you know, the property line of the new property down that we bought for Recreation Facility, you know, if you went and planted those every 40 feet, let them grow mature, you know, so one day when that property's developed, it already has a nice street tree presence there. That, you know, and, and, but stay out of the field, so to speak. Just get right there on, on the, on the right-of-way line. I know that the Linear Park on North Mobile Street has some nice open runs there that you could plug in some street trees. That would be a good location. And I know that we've got some pretty tired trees in the island at Pier Avenue Boat Ramp that just drive me crazy, because they're just, they're saddest, poor, but they've been, Paul said they've been that way for 40 years, but I'd like to redo that little island, and, and that would be a good place to plant a couple of trees, too. And I, but I'd need to find out if that bay exposure was problematic to the species. But, yes, I think we've got plenty of, of options there. Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Boone?
Actually, my calculations, if we stay under bid law, we can, as I call it, eat these trees and add 25, buy 25 more trees, and still stay under bid law, so you have 25 trees.
Yes, sir. Yeah, I believe, I believe we'd be fine. And then, I had 24 in there, and, and that would be, would put us at like 48,000 total, so, yes, sir. So, yeah, we could get 25.
And I hate kind of getting on this, but I'm assuming when the trees were ordered, they were ordered under the same information we're getting right now. Is that correct, on this order we have now? Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
The one thing I'm looking at, it's not so much the height of the diameter of the trees. The one we have here, from here, they're saying two and a half, they look closer to three, three and a half inches. I mean, they're, they're look like that. Whereas, the ones we've got now are maybe an inch and a half, inch and a quarter.
Yes, sir. And, and, and I understand, just for your reference points, that there's only two of the giants that are currently in the ground, okay?
I understand. What I'm trying to get at, I guess, is, we're ordering these at the same information that we got last time, yet this truckload of trees came in, and, just assume if, if I had done this at my house, and these trees came in, and they're not the 12-footers I ordered, number one, why were they unloaded? And then, second of all, why would they even be planted under, I mean, we're talking seven feet short. I'm not following, and I want to make sure that this doesn't happen again, as far as the council thinks one thing, we get a shipment or something, and it gets dropped off, and we have to do something with it.
Well, and, 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 you know, probably, and I'll own this, is that, again, when, when I presented to y'all, I presented pictures, because that's one of the things I asked for them to provide, and, but I, you know, we did not get a minimum caliper, which we, we have asked them, you know, two and a half inch would be a minimum caliper would be acceptable, and a height. And we're going, we would verify that, and, and basically let them know that before we unload them in the truck, we're going to measure them. And if they're not, we're, we're going to reject whatever's on that load that's not. That, a lesson learned there.
Grant, I can accept that part. A lot of things do happen, but it just seemed odd. You know, we're talking about the same thing we talked about last time, hoping we can get the right thing this time. I just want to make sure that we get the right thing this time, if we do choose to go...
Yes, sir.
Order 25 trees, or 24 trees, whatever comes out to be.
All right, counsel, we've been about 40 minutes on this discussion. Let me see if I can wrap this up a little bit. Let me ask, let me ask counsel some questions. Who wants to leave the smaller trees that were planted along Section Street in place right now? Is anybody who wants to leave, other than those giants? Who wants to leave the huge trees, the huge seven-foot trees in place? Anybody? If, could, could we all agree real quick that we want to replace all of those smaller trees? Is that pretty much a given?
Yes.
I think that that's pretty much a given, from what I've heard. So, we're looking at, option three is not an option, because that's leaving the existing ones in place. Let me ask you this, Richard. Can we change out all of the smaller trees that were currently planted? Change out the huge for the giants, confirming that they're a minimum, say, 12-foot height, that we get what we order? And that's above ground, not the bottom of the root ball? And then, replace the problem trees with the giants as well?
Can we wait until January to replace the problem trees?
Well, we could, that could be for discussion, but I just, it just, I was, that might keep everything still under the bid law as well, and allow us to move forward with it.
Well, this, this would be my commitment to you. We will, we will maximize the number of trees without exceeding the bid law. And if we can't deal with the four remaining problem trees, we'll make that a separate project in January, it'll be a new budget year, and it will be a minimal expense, because we would send a truck over, they'd load the trees on them, and we'd come over and plant them, so...
And, and I understand when you, when you mobilize the crews to do this work, you want to do as many as possible, but I, I guess, one thought about doing as much as we can and keep it under bid law was that if there are, if there's a way to keep some very mature trees out there that we're not, that they're not in danger, we could do this, you know? We probably should've started this, you know, maybe a few years ago, and then done a third, a third, a third, over three years. And that way, we have some real mature trees in the mix. So, I guess, I'm, I'm gonna, is that a good idea, what you're proposing, when we might want to leave some, some of our very mature trees in, in place now?
Yes, I, I, I think that, that the, kind of the hybrid that you have hinted at is that, A, everything south of Johnson just stays in place, because it's not a problem, okay? And we, we can address that at a future date.
Okay.
We make a, B, all of the, the smaller trees, specifically with the number-one target is the block of, between Fairhope and Magnolia, is replaced with the, the giant variety, which is at least a minimum 12 feet above grade, okay? And, address the four problem trees either through this, through this purchase, or if it's not feasible, delay until January, February, and deal with those at that time.
And I believe Patrick said, maybe even as long, as late as mid-March.
March, yes.
And then, we get through the whole season, if we had to pull four trees out and the rest were still lit. I mean, that's past Mardi Gras and everything. I think we'd be, I think we'd be fine.
Yes, sir. I think, I think that's a reasonable...
In February, early February?
I think early February.
Early February. So, we would be beyond that. What do you guys think about that?
That sounds good.
I think that's the plan, replace the ones on Fairhope and Magnolia with the, with the true giants, not advertised giants.
With a, with a 12-foot minimum, let's say.
12-foot minimum, and then, you know, we can do the others. I'm actually personally hesitant to replace anything, tear up anything new at this point until the beginning of the new year. But if, if they are, you know, you've used the term problematic, I don't know how truly problematic they are at this point. If it's something that can't wait, I understand, but if it could, I would hope that we can wait until the new year for any new replacements.
And I think that's a reasonable expectation, because, yes, they're problematic, but they're not going to be any more problematic in January than they are today, so...
Right. So, that would be my, my hope.
So, Lisa, your job between now and six o'clock to get that resolution straightened out. Maybe we could talk to Marcus, maybe you can give Marcus a week and see if he can't prepare that, summarizing what we just said.
Resolution to...
We have Cory here, we have our apprentice here, he can, can do it.
I think if you use that one. Delegate, baby, delegate.
And, Richard, I, I would like to just add, I do appreciate your willingness to come and try to find a solution.
Yes.
I know you have already worked hard to plant all those, and I hate that you're having to undo hard work, but I appreciate you coming with...
Well, the good news is, we can plant more trees in more locations, and that's a good thing, so...
There you go. That's a right answer.
It's job security, right?
We're going to find the, we're going to make lemonade out of lemon, so that's no problem, so...
Thank you, Richard.
All right, thank y'all.
Thank you, Richard. Thank you. Okay. Trying to get through this a little bit on time, so we can run through the agenda meeting and maybe shorten council meeting a little bit. I know people have places to be tomorrow. Committee updates. Councilman Robinson?
I don't have any at the moment.
Councilman Conyers?
I sent y'all a, a resolution proposed by the Environmental Advisory Board, something I'd like to have on the work session for the next, next council meeting, related to, one, their bylaws, and, two, the DIAS triangles. So, we'll go over that, the next council meeting, and then the library, nothing really there, just waiting on, you know, budget, to know, know where we stand on that. And obviously, hoping that's something we'll, we'll be addressing soon, so, that's it.
Okay. Councilman Brown?
No, what, big?
Councilman Boone?
Actually, no, no report.
Okay, I know that, I think at the, the last report I gave on the airport authority, I was telling you that we're getting some movement on the east side, and it looks like we're going to build between 20 and 24 tee hangars on the east side. There's also some negotiations going on for a, a private hangar on the east side. And then, on the southwest corner of the property, we've got a ground lease that we're working on there as well, in which we're going to have even, even more hangars built. And that was a, a section of the airport property that really hasn't ever been considered for development. So, that's kind of a little bit of icing on the cake, and, and I'll assure you, counsel, that, you know, I, I have in mind getting the airport off of the city's dime, and I think I made that pretty clear to them at the last meeting. So, they're, they're working on it, and this is going to generate revenues for the, for the, for the airport and the airport authority, that hopefully will wean them further off of, of the city. All right, with that, department heads? Mr. Allison?
What's that?
We'll start with you.
Good evening. Going pretty well, the gas department stuff, the first contract of the year, mid-September. The second one, the contracts have been sent up to them for signature, and then we'll work on getting them scheduled to get that work done by 12:31. The, we're doing the evaluations for the Restore Act Engineering firms, so that should, that should be to you on the council meeting, one of the meetings in September. Electric's going, the substation projects are still going pretty well, and hopefully the new water, wastewater superintendent will be here this week.
Okay.
And I have nothing on the agenda for the first time in like six meetings.
Oh, wow, that's amazing. Let me ask you a question. I, I missed, I apologize, I missed the last council meeting. The, the gas department, how did we get to where we got with the gas department?
The required, you know, it's, it's a 30 percent, you're supposed to be 10 percent, so that's going to be 18, 19, and 20. So, obviously, by not doing those inspections, to me, it was a personnel issue, and, which has been addressed. And, you know, without going into it in a public forum, I'll be happy to talk to you guys.
Sure. I understand, I understand the sense of question, but I, I didn't have an opportunity to talk about this yet, and...
So, we, you know, I, when I found out about this, the first thing we did was correct it, you know, and worked very hard to get them pointed in the right direction and realign their focus.
Do they have adequate staff now?
They have adequate staff for doing the maintenance. We are looking at alternatives for new construction and new subdivisions. So, right now, what we're doing is asking the developers if they want the gas infrastructure in for new subdivisions, that they install that with the water and the wastewater.
Yeah.
But we're also looking at some things that I want to bring to you early next year to incent some of that.
Because one of the things that I think of, Mr. Allison, is that over the last several years, we've grown that gas department and a number of, of new hires, and, and that was with the premise that we could keep up with the work. And, and then, we ran into issues with the inspections, and in addition to that, we just subbed out a lot of their work.
Well, the reason we did, we subbed out some of this work was just the time, trying to get three years' worth of work done in three months.
Okay. That was so that we could catch up, warm you up?
Correct. So that when we start next year, we are up to date with the PSC, and I don't have to explain to them after next year's inspection for 2020, but we still aren't there.
Okay.
So, that's, that's why we're subbing out this. It was, it's not a, it's not a personnel issue as far as number of people to do the maintenance, and basically like the generator services and new services, but when we add in the new subdivisions, then it becomes an issue of staffing.
So remind me, so, so the contract labor is for the inspection work?
The contract labor is for the inspection work and some cathodic protection issues, which we will be able to handle starting in '21. It's just getting all of this done between now and the end of the year, so that we start '21 fresh, up to date with the Public Service Commission.
How do you want to add to that? When was the assistant superintendent refunded?
Um, he was promoted in the budget for 2020, so I don't know the exact date.
I remember when I hired an operation director, they refunded all of the superintendents and the utility. When I hired Richard Peterson in March of that year, 2017, he said we leave the assistants funded, and that wasn't funded until 2020, so rather than, we didn't want to fire anybody, so we-
Ended up promoting all of the assistants to superintendent, and so, you know, there you go. This is why we always want to do the organizational chart and get the experience that we need in the, in the right places.
I don't recall defunding each one.
You definitely defunded each assistant.
Because we had to have the assistants approved in the '20 budget from last year.
We, we put them in, I tried to put them again in the 2017, they all said, if you've got an operation director now, we don't need assistants. 2018, it was cut, 2019, it was cut, and we got it in 2020.
So, but that's the reason we're hiring the contractors now. It's not going forward, it's just to get basically three years of work done in three months.
I have a question.
Yes?
I guess this is for the future, but we're also tied sense of track to replace iron pipe to-
Correct.
In time, exactly.
Um, in the work session, we had talked about the civil engineer. I've put in the budget for 2021, and one of the tasks that that person, if you guys approve it, would be assigned to is designing that cast iron main replacement. So yes, there is a time sensitivity to that, and we have addressed it, we're not in violation for that one.
No, no, I just wanted to make sure we're staying on top of it.
We are staying on top of that, and that is part of that plan for that in-house. Part of it's gonna be replaced with the Church Street Outfall project, that's the start of it, and I think what that'll do is, as we track the cost for that, that'll let us budget a certain amount going forward for cast iron main replacement. I have a line item in the '21 budget for the gas department for cast iron main replacement, but it's in my best guess right now, after we do the Church Street project, I think we can refine those numbers a little bit.
Okay.
And be able to present, okay, if we want to do one mile a year, it's gonna cost this much.
My comment is more of a reminder.
Oh, we're very mu- very much aware.
Caught behind it.
Yeah, very much aware, we know we gotta get that out of there.
And why we needed the technical department very early on, which I do think ADEM will end up making us do. We should've gotten it funded years ago.
Thank you, Mr. Allison.
Thank you.
Hunter?
I have an easier topic, but it's still gonna, kind of quirky how we get there. There is a request from Charlene Lee with the walking school bus program to install a couple of just informational signs at gathering locations for the walking school bus. Because of our sign ordinance and kinda how that comes into play, there's, just wanted to bring that to your attention, because where the placement is, is on city property, either as owner or leaseholder, so there would have to be a permissions to do that. We don't have to do that tonight, I can bring that next council meeting and have those locations explicitly laid out where that would be for, one, and, and might have to get some legal advice on how to accomplish this, one, there's a secondary leaseholder, Coastal Community College, I believe they're, they're familiar and, and in support of this, so it, it, it's just if there's any concerns right now, I can attack in the next two weeks.
Where does the sign ordinance come into play?
There is a stipulation where you can't put a sign on, basically if it's on your property, you can't, you can't do an off-premise sign. So with the walking school bus, they really don't have a premise to themselves, now, the city funds that program in part, so it may be that the city needs to install that, that sign, it becomes something that we, we kinda take, adopt, if you will, but that, that's the hurdle.
Are the signs themselves conforming?
Yes, they have been designed by Rebecca Bryant, who's on our planning commission, Architect, Local Architect, and they are conforming.
Questions? Yeah, Hunter called me about it. Two locations, there's one up there at Faulkner, and then others right there going into Homestead Village, where the new pavine was placed.
Yes, the little gazebo there on plantation.
Last year or so?
Yes.
I've got a little concern, I mean, I love what Charlene's doing with the walking school bus, but, you know, if we give a pass to one person on the sign ordinance, and that's why a lot of people love Fairhope, is there's not signs all over the place, not just opening that door. And it's mostly advertising, right? Like sponsors?
The, well, what we're, I've, what I was proposing, that does have one side, it's informational, and the backside is, is sponsors, and I've recommended that those don't need to be there at all. I certainly don't want to open that door where we have informational signs and have sponsors on them, that, that's just not, so, so I think the trick is where this doesn't open the door to everyone, and we're in support of a local pro- program, if we can get to that solution, and I think there's some opportunities there, that we can, we can do that, but no, I don't think there should be any sponsors on, anything, and told Charlene as such, so if we can, if we can get to an, an avenue that would, would allow this to happen, but not be, I, I don't, I don't foresee too many programs like this, but that, that's kinda why I'm bringing to you guys, so y'all might, y'all might have other thoughts.
Okay, customers? Thank you.
Thanks.
Officer Hammerick, anything for the PD?
We do have two things on the agenda, I don't know if y'all have any questions about it. One of them's just a liquor license, and everything's in order, so that's not a big deal there, but the second one is the, the window that's going in the lobby, do y'all have any questions about that? It's gonna go in the, the records clerk, and make it, I think the public will love it, because it's gonna give them, you know, personal, person-to-person access with, with records and stuff like that. No questions?
Any questions?
No. No, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Chief Ellis?
No, sir.
Okay. Ms. Green? Okay. Marcus? Lisa? Richard?
I've got at least, for a little happy news, I, I don't know if Lisa was able to give it to you, but to date, we have listed 39 golf carts, we have sold 39 golf carts for a total of $125,788 for an average sales price per golf cart of $3,225.33. And if this holds true, I think what Lynn and I figured out, that the sale of the old golf carts is gonna cover somewhere between 85 and 90% of the cost of the leasing of the new golf carts.
Wow, that's great.
So, that's, they have been a popular, popular item on the, the gov deals, so just happy, because I know y'all were asking about that, and y'all set a $2,000 reserve, and they've not had any problems selling, so thank y'all.
Did we advertise these as golf carts personally driven by Jack Burrell? Is that why they're selling?
I think so, it's the celebrity factor that, that went with it, so.
Thank y'all. And I think this data is, is very good for, for future decisions to be made, you know, being made for either purchase or lease of golf carts. We had hoped that we would have good resale value on those, when we decided to purchase them, I don't think that we ever dreamed we would get this kind of return, so.
I think we got 29 more to list, so the next batch will go on in about two weeks, where those will have closed, and then will be done about a month from now, so, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Richard. Ms. White?
I have another question.
Okay, Ms. Mazur? HR?
This is the first time I've had the opportunity to say hello and discuss something, so I'm a little excited. Anyway, we just have something on the agenda for this evening, I thought we could go ahead and discuss it.
Yeah, that'd be great.
And so it's ordinance, ordinance number five, where we want to look at allowing part-time employees from working only 19 hours to being able to increase that to 29 hours. Currently, we have approximately 85 part-time employees, and they're only allowed to work 19 hours, as I said, we want to be able to give them 10 hours more of the opportunity to work. Right now, it's a hardship for departments when we're only allowed to have these part-time employees, and we're only allowed to work them 19 hours. Sometimes we could utilize them more, because, you know, as the seasons changes, we need more hours, such as, you know, lifeguard, sometimes those positions, we have more positions than we have people to fill them, so it would help with scheduling purposes if we're able to work them more. This would incur an increase of 6.41% for those part-time employees that would be allowed to work more part-time hours, so in October, there would be an added 1% increase. It's basically would allow for their RSA retirement. If there is an RSA, RSA retiree that's currently part-time, there would be no match, so we wouldn't be worrying with that percentage for them. But it's also a good recruiting tool for those permanent part-time employees, where they'd be able to work more hours, and they would have an extra added benefit that they usually wouldn't find working part-time anywhere else.
Does the change from 19 to 29 affect the benefits package that we have to offer them as a part-time employee?
It would not affect their benefits, no. Once they hit working 30 hours, between that 30 and 32-hour mark, we would be incurring benefits for them, but we would not if they're stopping at that 29-hour mark.
There was that 1% we would have to add.
We're going from tier two to tier one, so we would be changing over to tier one in October.
Yeah, we were doing that anyway, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yep. Okay. Any other questions? What do you recommend?
I recommend allowing the extra 10 hours of part-time work.
Okay.
I think that'd be great.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, let's go and, and end the work session and go into the agenda meeting. We just covered item number five. Item number six is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an amendment to the contract for the Fairhope Point Clear Rotary Youth Club, for additional, not exceed $2,000 for needed cleaning supplies. Who would speak to that? Oh, Jessica, did I miss you? You had stepped in?
I'm good right now.
Okay, I'm sorry. Who would speak to item six? Kim, I see you getting up, is that you?
What I've found as staff is that as the Rotary Youth needed supplies, they would come to the city, and we would give them bleach, some paper towels, it was cleaning supplies, my understanding this has been going on for maybe a while, and because that is a nonprofit organization that's being run, I just think, you know, the supplies were just as given to them, but, you know, talking, we really need to address that in their agreement, because we are giving something, thing, a value away, so it's best legally for us to address that. I, we ran a report, it looks like average about $7,000, $1,800 a year in supplies that's being given to that organization. It is our facility, but it is run, you know, it's our property, but it is run by them. So that's the reason I, you know, I had gone to Lisa to add that to the amendment.
Additional monies, but they would not come to the city and get our supplies, and right?
They would. We could buy those supplies a lot cheaper than what they can, because we buy in such bulk.
Oh, I see what you're saying, so you're just upping the amount of the contract to take into consideration what they're taking from the city, so, so it's-
So it's, they would still-
Fully accounted for, then?
Yes, they would still be able to come here, we could be able to give them supplies through our inventory system, we're currently coding that to a separate line item, but this way, we're just gonna put at a max, this is the most, and we'll be able to put that line item, you know, code it directly under the appropriations.
Okay.
But it's then that way, we're not giving away something to an organization improper.
So we have a means to account for how much of the cleaning supplies that they're coming and taking then? Okay.
Yes, and my understanding there must have been an employee of the city that used to work over there, and so it just was told, hey, yeah, they can have these supplies. But because it is a private organization, we need to just account for it properly.
I got you. Questions, counsel? Item number seven is a resolution that the council authorizes, authorizes the mayor or the council president to submit a letter to the AMEA requesting the three grants, totaling $20,000 to be used for the hatch, instead of reading all those words. We've done this now for the last, like, three to four, five years. Any questions about that? All right, item eight is to award an RFP for program administrative services contract for the Alabama Department of Conservation and National Resources. This is for our Restore Act, sewer upgrade projects, to grant management with a total not to exceed $400,000. Who would speak to that? Okay.
So this is the first of two awards that will be given as part of this grant. The, the program administration, which you'll see tonight, will help us as we continue down the path to make sure that we're checking all the boxes for treasury, that we're staying, like, we're, we're working through that red tape the right way that we're supposed to.
$400,000, how many people do they staff to stay on top of that, and how long of a task is that?
It's for the entire, entirety of the grant, and I believe that's a five-year grant, and they will be here tonight, so you, you probably could ask them about the, the number of staffers that they will have on that. This is standard for all of the Restore Grants that we're doing.
So, so this is not a lump sum payment, this is a-
No, this is a, through the entirety of the grant, sure.
It's through five years, over five years, okay.
Yeah, we're not writing a $400,000 check, and ADC and R isn't writing that tonight, so, any other questions on that?
Questions? Okay, thank you, Jessica.
Thanks.
Item number nine is a resolution that the public improvements indicated for the tracery are hereby accepted for public maintenance. I think that's just a formality, correct? Is that right, Buford?
Refined adoption.
Okay. Would you be available to speak if we have questions on that, Buford, or, or you, Hunter? Okay. Item 10 is to award a bid for repair resurfacing and striping of multiple road projects for the public works department. RJ, wanna touch on that in just a few minutes?
Yes, sir, just a couple of, just things to point out, you know, we, we delayed putting this bid out, this was gonna go out right, and when COVID hit hard, and part of looking at not spending money until we had a little better security there, so we got that out, and I, I think we actually got a very, very good price, you can see the spread, we had five bids that came in, and about $75,000 difference when top and bottom, and I do want to point out, and if you look in the memo, the new gas tax is providing $75,000 toward this, which in effect is going to cover the entirety of the resurfacing of pure avenues, so that gas tax has benefited us, at least it's paving a major road in our city, so be glad to ask, answer any questions if, if needed.
Questions, counsel? We can ask them again in the council meeting if you like.
Thank you, and I have number 11 if you have any questions.
Yep. So this is for the basketball court?
A new outdoor court, and this does include the court surface and the coating on it, as well as the equipment and a 10-foot fence all the way around the perimeter.
Is it a full-size court?
Yes, full-size, and it's regulatory to whatever the association that's in charge of high school and college basketball courts, so it is-
Is that in keeping with the master plan out there?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, this is kinda the first, first piece of that master plan.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, item 12 is the city vote to approve an unbudgeted procurement for Munis Mobile for the Parks and Rec Department, I believe this was discussed a couple of council meetings ago. Jeff, we may get Jeff in here, I'm sure that Jeff would, would be able to talk about it. Pat, you talked about it as well, I believe you may have got up and spoken about it more, if you wanna get up, we've got, we've got enough time, if you wanna talk about it for a few minutes again.
Yeah, so as we discussed in the work session a few weeks ago, this software would help us streamline everything as far as rec center, pool, youth sports, all activities, citizens would be, be able to get on the software, on the app, and register for classes at the rec center, pool memberships, whatever, and pay online, so everything is streamlined. It's also gonna allow me to see who's using our facilities and when, so it, it will be able to schedule out practices, games, and everything on this software. For instance, if a, if a coach wanted to get on and see if a practice time is available for a certain field, he would be able to pull that up, if it's already been reserved, that, that time would be blocked out, so this is gonna make everything a lot more streamlined and easier to manage.
Okay. Questions for Pat? The rec board in favor of this?
Yes.
Very good. Okay, as Officer Hammerick mentioned in his comments earlier, if you have any questions about the bulletproof window for the police station lobby, roughly $10,000 funded through the CARES Act, and what's our confidence level that we would receive that money from the CARES Act, Kim?
I have a responding email behind it, it's one of his agendas, they're responding saying they have to-
Okay, you already had a response, did you say you've already had a response, has it approved?
Yes, I have a green sheet attached to behind it.
Okay.
So you should have that and the parks, um, agenda, both of those, I have confirmation from the state.
Questions for Kim?
Yes.
Would you be the one to ask questions of, if we had any meeting, Kim?
Yes, sir.
Would that be you, or? Would that be you or Officer Hammerick? Either one? Okay. Item 14 is pretty self-explanatory, and that's it. Any more comments, counsel? Okay, we'll adjourn, and let's try to meet back in about 15 minutes, get started, right at 6:00.